Okay, so let's call the meeting to order at 7:01. This is the November 14th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. And if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. And Clark, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Okay, the procedure for remote access. The Dambie Select Board and Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and remotely, but are not public meetings per se. Public attendees, both in person and remote participants, who wish to comment on agenda items will be given an opportunity at the beginning of each meeting to do so. As in the past, written communications may also be sent to the boards for consideration. Businesses conducted and votes are cast only by board members. The chat feature is to only be used by remote participants to alert the hosts to technical difficulties. It is not for private conversations. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for public participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by the online host upon joining the meeting. Remaining so unless recognized to speak. Participants should arrive on time and state their name for the record. Those who desire to speak in order to comment or question should use the hand raising function and will be recognized in the order in which the hands were raised. Remote participants when recognized will unmute and clearly identify themselves by first and last name and the area of town in which they reside. Comments and questions are limited to two to three minutes. Anyone who desires to speak longer than that should arrange to be placed on the agenda beforehand. General ground rules are that the speakers will not be interrupted. There will be no crosstalk between members of the audience and the speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue, not personalities. I will entertain a motion to set the agenda and I have two additions to the agenda. Under the regional marketing initiative, we're going to have another item, which is to appoint an emergency management committee. And under new business, we have a request from Courier Memorial School for playground equipment. Are there any other? I'm sorry. Playground equipment. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
One question, Oak Richard for 26, Road Committee, that's going to be 25.
Not that it probably matters, but... Not sure if it matters, Brad, but...
For the road grant?
Yeah, is that supposed to be 26?
Twenty-six.
For the Peppin one, or whatever?
Yes, it's for 26.
Steve, did we ever get that traffic report?
No, but they were redoing it last time he was here.
No, he said that you didn't get it.
Right, I didn't get it and he said that the intern that was there had left and they don't know what, where the results went and they had just put the counter out last month when he was here. But I haven't gotten anything from him.
Okay, because I thought what he'd said is, oh, you didn't get it.
He wouldn't get it to you.
Yeah, that he'd get it to us, thanks.
We can talk about that in an appropriate point. So any other changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, so we've got the two additions, all those in favor of adopting the agenda with these two additions. Please say aye.
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 Did we have a motion?
I made a motion that you set the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
We're going to blame it on Kenny because he made such a disrepute.
Caused turmoil.
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay.
Fire my...
So now we have public comment. And we forgot to ask who we have in the virtual audience.
Okay, and I do have public comment from Annette.
So who's in the audience there?
Okay. Audience, we have Lauren Dever, Bill Richardson, D.R. White, Annette Smith, Chris Hardaway, Terry Parker, Sharon White, and then Renata Alliward. Renata Alliward. And then, Annette does have a public comment.
Okay, Annette?
Yes, um...
Yes.
You were talking about the traffic count. I was going to ask if you were talking about the Baker Brook Road traffic count. I didn't think that's what you were talking about. Yes, it was. It was, okay, so you don't have it yet. No, and I thought the last meeting, you may remember, I thought he said he would get it because he seemed baffled that we hadn't gotten it yet and...
Yep.
Okay, we just didn't say what road it was, so thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, not hearing any, we'll close that portion of the meeting. And I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the Select Board meeting of October 10th, 2024.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. Any corrections to the minutes? Not hearing any, all those in favor of adopting the October 10th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and we will move on to the regional marketing initiative and we have Lyle Jepson here this evening to present that.
You're letting me be first, thank you very much.
Well, that's where you are on the agenda, so...
Thank you.
Just before the bell rang.
Each year you get to see us just about this time. Olivia Buckstrom is not here tonight, she is at another meeting.
Thank you.
Making the rounds to our supported towns who have contributed to the regional marketing initiative and very much appreciate your support. Each year you have allowed us to go on the ballot for $1,300 towards the regional marketing initiative. And in that packet, you can see some of the things that we're working on, but primarily I wanted to talk about why we do the regional marketing initiative and I know this will bore a couple of you because you've heard it before and I apologize in advance, but our goal is to support our business community and the business community continues to need employees. If you look at the Rutland Regional Medical Center's website right now, they have about 125 job openings. Seventeen hundred total employees, but they have job openings all the way from housekeeping to doctors. Our role with them is to reach out around the nation and help them try to find people to come and move here. And so we have targeted areas around the U.S. that we have found success in and it continues to be places like the hot south where people don't want to be where it's 100 degrees for 90 days in a row. Out west where there continue to be fires, they see Vermont as a very safe place to be. So we market to regions where we know there are folks that we're looking for and we're finding success in having people move here. In the packet behind the pictures, and I can describe what those weekend getaway pictures are about, but the page behind that will show you some of the statistics of people who have moved through the program. And I say people who moved through the program because we know other people are moving here, but they don't need our permission to come, but these are just the folks that we know have come through. And since 2021, we've had 202 folks move and just this year alone, we've had 42 move. And on the back, it points out the types of jobs that they have come for, where they're working, the towns of residence that we are aware of that they have moved to, as well as our corporate sponsors. Our corporate sponsors pay for about 70% of this because they recognize how important it is for our region to get out in front and to try to attract people to come here. This is the, we're going into our ninth year of this program and in this year, we have received a grant from the state because they have recognized the work we're doing and they would like that to continue. As part of receiving that grant, one of the things we needed to do was we need to show other counties in the state what we're doing because they want them to do similar things. So Olivia, who again couldn't be here tonight and she apologizes, is really leading the charge around the state for attracting people to Vermont. The first thing that you should ask me is, well, where are they going to live? Because housing is an issue. And that is, and we have a committee that's working on that. Part of that, we hope, will be the reopening of the Skyline Manufacturing Building in Fairhaven. There is conversation about that. There's a feasibility study going on right now about how to reopen that for manufactured homes. It wouldn't be the same kind of manufacturer homes that were in there back in 2014 when they were still in production, but there would be homes coming out of there that hopefully people could afford. We're, aside from this, we have a weekend getaway program and that weekend getaway program, you see some pictures there, twice a year, we put out around the nation, would you like to come and visit us, stay at Killington and visit all of our towns here? We had five families this fall come, five families last spring and we got in front of, and each of those cases, we got in front of 800,000 people around the U.S. Now, I'll put their names in the hat. We had like 700 people put their names in the hat saying, hey, we'd like to come and visit, from those we needed to pick and we picked five families in each of those two periods of time to come. The question you might ask is, did they move here or not?
So do you give them like an expense paid vacation?
They come and they stay overnight at Killington Resort. That gives us a really great rate to have them come. We do pay for their meals while they're here and they get to travel around. They have to get themselves here and they have to get themselves home. And they've come from Texas, Illinois, Baltimore, the West Coast. But while they're here, yeah, we pay for their stay. Have they moved here? We've had a family move here, but more importantly, we're getting in front of hundreds of thousands of people and that's the important part. And once we get in front of them, we have their email addresses and so now we can continue to connect with them and hopefully they'll come and join us. So regional marketing at the end of the day is to try to get staff here for our businesses that need staff. And if your school is anything like other schools, there's declining enrollment and we need more kids. So it won't surprise you that when we draw names out of a hat, sometimes there are three or four kids that are coming with them at the same time. During the interview process, we find out, do you have children, what do you like to do for fun? And so the families that came this time, many of them had family as well with them and they're looking at the schools when they come. And sometimes we think our schools maybe not be what we want them to be, but when people come here, they say our schools are great. And so I think an outside perspective is sometimes really important because our schools really are good. You have allowed us to continue with this project as have many towns. You allowed us to put on your ballot a $1,300 request of the town. We've been successful in that and we appreciate that. We would hope that you would allow us to do it again and if you will, we will do our best to spend every dollar in the best way we can.
Have you submitted a letter to the town clerk?
Not yet.
So that's what you need to do.
Kind of like to have you folks say, yeah, you'd like to do it again and then we will follow the procedure that you have in place.
Now, how many years, Lyle, have you said you guys have been working on this?
This is going into our ninth year.
Ninth year. The areas that you represent, meaning basically Rutland County, has our census gone up or down in those areas? In that short, I mean, it's hard to tell because it's in the middle of a...
Pandemic.
Well, yeah, well, I'm saying because our censuses are done on the 10th years, not on the mid-year. So you started in the 15, I'm saying probably, and you're at a 24 right now.
I think our first year was 2017 maybe?
Seventeen.
Yeah, then we really started actively doing this, started planning it in 16.
And you guys probably don't have the staffing to tell if the census, if these areas, if we're growing or stagnant or if we're...
The county has not grown considerably. My argument for regional marketing is, if we had not been doing this, what would be happening?
Right.
And it's like when, during the pandemic, you couldn't buy a truck and, but you didn't see Ford not advertising Ford trucks because they knew eventually they were going to have the trucks back and they needed to be in front of people. We have that same philosophy. We need to be right out in front all the time, in front of people because other states are doing the same thing and we've got to keep up. We can't lose more people and we can't lose our young people. And so we need to have exciting things going on here and we need to bring more people in. So other things that we're doing, when you look through our annual report, you're going to see we're working with the Beldins to make sure they can build a hotel downtown. We're making sure that Killington Resort can do the things that they need to do up there to grow and expand and bring people in. You'll hear that we were involved in the Super Walmart move from, or the Walmart move from downtown to the Diamond Run Mall. We need to redevelop that site up there and we need to make sure that there isn't retail bleed. Right now, there's a lot of retail bleed where people go to Glenn's Falls or other places to do shopping. It needs to be here. Will the, will the Super Walmart negatively affect Hannaford's? I'm still going to go to Hannaford's and other people are still going to go to Price Chopper. But people who are leaving town, we hope will start spending their money in town. So that was a whole lot of different things, sorry.
Nope.
Just trying to point out some of the other things we're doing is this is not regional marketing. We're working on housing, we're working on development. We're working with the Mint Maker Space to grow that because we need places that people want to go. And if you haven't been to the Mint Maker Space, you might want to visit because they've got cool stuff like laser cutters and 3D printers and welders. They've got it all there and it's encouraging younger people to stick around and find some things that they really like to do.
What else are you doing to encourage younger people to stick around?
Great question. So we are going tomorrow to visit a, what is called Tradeapalooza and down in Concord, New Hampshire, they're having a big trade show for high school and college students. And it's going to be where their, Mike Rowe is going to speak, the Dirty Jobs guy. He is going to be encouraging students to stay in the trades and to get involved in the trades. We hope to do something like that here. And we would want to have 80 to 100 tradespeople with all of their equipment and do kind of an equipment rodeo and have a Mike Rowe type guy come and talk to them so that we can create relationships between contractors and developers and keep those kids here. It's relationship building is what we really need to work on. The local workforce investment board just got a million dollar grant to support those types of things, to keep kids here. We want to support that program, we want to support the tech center. So those are just a couple of things that we're working on. It's like a plate of spaghetti. You've got to throw it all at the wall all at once and do it all at once to keep, to keep people here. Heard what the regional marketing initiative does and it would be remiss and if Olivia was sitting right here, she'd say, tell them about the retention. So here we have parity and we reach out to our biggest employers and we say, send anybody who has come here in the last two years because we want them to meet other people. What often happens is somebody will move here and they're for a job, but the spouse hasn't met anybody. We need to make sure the spouse is happy or they're leaving. And so we do have some meetups where people get together. They'll do a miniature golf thing or they'll go to the Mint in December and make Christmas ornaments, you know, just things for people to do.
Do you mean when you follow, see people that have come here, have stayed, you know, the seven, eight, nine, you know, you've done it, that they stayed past a year or two?
We have and they do. And what we're finding is, and we keep track of who comes to those meetups because if they don't come to the meetups, we're reaching out to them. And Carly Haven is our concierge coordinator and she connects people and helps create relationships. If she hasn't heard of somebody or seen them, she will reach out to them. It's like a welcome wagon on steroids. I just put you to sleep, sorry.
No, I think it's pretty good.
Our ask tonight is to allow us to be on the ballot. We will do the paperwork we need to do, get that in. Again, you have been very supportive in the past and we appreciate that. You're not the only ones. Fairhaven, Killington, Rutland, Little Town Springs, Brandon, West Rutland, Proctor, Rutland Town, those are just a few that have been contributing members. If you want to have me come back sometime when I'm not asking for something, feel free to do that. You probably feel like, here he comes again, all right.
It's good to hear about your efforts, particularly with the young people because that seems to be something that's affecting the whole state. Our kids are doing that.
Yes, it really is, yeah. And we need infrastructure here for why they want to stay here. It's retail all the way to Mint Maker Space, two things to do. Pretty excited with the things that are happening at Killington. You know, they're really looking to be a four season resort where there's things going on, bike trails, skiing, whatever.
I'm just glad to see you're in the trades too. To help, working on the trade thing to me is important to see too.
Huge. We get calls every week, somebody saying, I can't find a plumber. And I'll say, I can't either. And so we really need to support that as something we work at. And when I was, I was probably, you know, the tech center director for 16 years, a staffer type, and I would always say to the kids down there, you want the nice toys? Become an electrician or a plumber. You'll be able to afford the nice toys.
Okay, so what we need you to do is write a letter to the town, care of the town clerk, addressing the amount that you'd like to be put on the ballot for and then the voters will decide.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for dealing down tonight.
And again, if you would like me to come back for some reason that you think we can be helpful with something, I'm more than happy to come back. Am I late or are you going to be offended? No, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is pretty easy. It's time once again to appoint or reappoint our emergency management committee. And I've spoken with both Tom Johnston and Shelley Taylor who hold those positions right now and they both indicated they would be interested in continuing. So I, unless people have other names they want to submit, I would be...
I'll make the motion that we leave it with Tom Johnson and Shelley.
I'll second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor of Johnson and Taylor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously. Now, we have a tier one small cultivator. This is a renewal application.
So this operation has been in...
It has been in existence for at least a year, possibly two. Years kind of go by very quickly for me. I think it's been one year, but it's been two very often.
And there's no changes, they're just renewing?
Correct. And they have been approved by the state. So entertain a motion to renew this application.
I'll make the motion, we renew it.
Okay, motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
The last meeting we discussed what we couldn't and couldn't reveal, right? Did we have a discussion on that other applicant?
Right, we can't publicly give the address of this, but if you're interested, I can slide this piece of paper over to you.
Well, I read, I saw, I was reading some of the cannabis stuff and there are certain things you can't disclose. It seemed more around like security plans, operational plans, not necessarily like basic business information that every other business has disclosed. So I just didn't know if you guys had looked at that as well. If you feel it's important to look into more, ask the question of the state, that what can be? Because when I read that, it just referred more security, operational plans, I think trade secrets, things like that, that weren't to be disclosed.
Where did we come up with that we couldn't disclose?
So it's...
I believe it was at a workshop that...
It's in the rules, it is in the rules. What it says is... Records relating to license, security, safety, transportation, trade secrets, including information provided in the operating plan. You know, it shouldn't be discussing, security features, alarms, equipment, non-obvious points of ingress, egress, vehicle storage, finances or operating practices. So is what it says, you're not supposed to be disclosing. But, and I'm only saying because like you said, a lot of, every other business in the state, I believe, has to disclose. And I'm just, if we think, if we think that's important to the town and stuff, maybe we can ask that question or confirm it with the Cannabis Control Commission and to clarify what...
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that if we're approving these, knowing where they are should be...
Well, any store that we approve a liquor license on, we say where that is and, you know...
We're not asking anything different of everybody, anything else that we do. We're not targeting these, just, to me, it's general information. We're in this for the town, people, you know, that...
Yeah, no, that, but we should probably confirm with the Cannabis Control Board.
Yeah, I personally don't think it's a good idea to give out the address just because I have a feeling that it might increase security problems. But that's my personal take on it.
Maybe you can't, maybe this, the cannabis, I was going to say that's part of it, it is more involved than what you read here. I'm okay with that, I just...
But that's no different than a store having alcohol and cigarettes and somebody being able to walk into them. Um, I think it is different because they're going there to make a purchase. This is an operation where, I mean, if you want to compare it to alcohol and cigarettes, this would be more of like a distillery and...
Only the moonshiners kept their distillery, right? Their breweries actually publicly...
Yeah, and now they're making, you know, they're making headway with these microbreweries and everybody that has a nursery is not only selling pumpkins, but they're selling pumpkin spice beer and whatnot. I do think that that should be a question for the board, Cannabis Board, if we are to withhold the, the address or, or not. I mean, we are approving a business. Might take a little bit. I've not had a good experience with contacting them. They seem to not answer their phones, and they work from home.
I'm okay, you know, voting on this still, I just think moving forward, I just like to ask the question.
For future reference. So we do have a motion on the floor. Is there other discussion? I don't hear any. So, all those in favor, or do you want to poll the board? Let's poll the board.
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Thunder?
Yes.
Okay, so motion passes unanimously. Okay, next we have our treasurer's report. And to preface that, tomorrow is the day that taxes are due, so for those of you in the viewing audience, that's a reminder if you have not paid your taxes yet. And we had a little bit of discussion earlier about accessibility for tomorrow. Do you want to elaborate on that? And perhaps, if we feel it's important, we could ask the town clerk to come in for hours that you can't.
I'll leave that up to you, guys. So tomorrow, we will be here from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And if anyone needs to make arrangements, if there's an issue, please feel free to call. Otherwise, you can always leave your tax payment in the slot, and as long as it was postmarked by tomorrow, it'll count. At this point, we have about half of the payments posted. We do have a pile that came in, in the mail that aren't posted yet, but otherwise, feel free to reach out.
Any comments or discussion on that?
Nope.
Okay. What else do you have for us, Michelle?
Um, not much. Everything else is rolling along. I understand assault has been coming in, and like I said, taxes are about halfway posted. There's plenty more than that, they're just not posted yet.
Okay. Did you say, maybe we're up to three-quarters?
Well, we have just over half posted, so I bet you that's, yeah.
Next, we'll move on to a discussion about the transfer station and renewing Casella's I also, just a few hours ago, got an email from Rutland Solid Waste, who did a review of our transfer station, and found some deficiencies, nothing major, but basically, one of the things is that a lot of the signs need to be replaced, they're kind of illegible. We also have a sign up there that says, "We're still taking electronics," which we are not, that needs to be removed. And there was some stuff that I felt was rather picky, like there was some litter on the ground, but we all know what the bears do, and what the wind does around here, and I think Cliffy does a pretty damn good job of keeping the place clean, but we've had some...
Yeah, that's from the rats.
Oh, the rats?
Yeah, that's from the rats. We're in the process of dealing with them.
I don't think that term really...
This is the first year that the town has had rats at the dump, and it's been, I don't know, two months now that we've been in the process of getting rid of them.
Well, the rats are migrating up the brook from the other side of the railroad tracks. We've had a number of complaints, I've seen dead rats in the road.
Where are they coming from?
The other side of the railroad tracks.
They're chilling, they're off.
Really?
They're dead now.
They're coming from Brooklyn Road.
That we've never had before, ever.
Why is it disconnected?
Mice, yes, rats.
They're offline.
So, we have been asked to renew the waste and recycling agreement with Casella.
This meeting is being recorded.
Sorry, I lost service for...
Our 10-year contract has expired. And I think we really need to make some kind of a decision about what we're going to do with relocating the transfer station, and if in fact, we still wish to...
Well, I think Mount Tabor is on board. I have had more discussions with them, so...
You have?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think there's very good potential that we can do something, so we should keep that in mind, that if that's the direction we want to go, is that...
So shall we table renewing the contract?
I wonder how, I mean, I would assume these guys will operate under the, did they raise anything, lower anything in the contract?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just came upon it today.
So this is a five-year, I think this one's a five-year renewal, and I think if there's no clear breach of it, you have to give, like, I think it's a year's notice, I believe, if I read it right, to get out of it, if there's no breach of, but I couldn't see. He made a quick, the guy on email made a quick comment about, basically similar to previous with, but I don't know, you know, he didn't give much specifics about what went up and what didn't, he just posted.
Yeah, I mean, they're saying the haul's 190 a ton, the processing is 154 a ton, and the rental's 229 a month. I'm not sure what our last contract consisted of. I don't remember the last contract, but I did notice that we're paying more for recyclables than we are for garbage.
Comment says, "Updated contract is a five-year agreement, some minor changes to how we charge recycling processing with current recycling values, everything else is essentially the same as the previous agreement." He's Woody.
Yeah, and when we signed the contract last time, China was still buying recyclables. Right. Yeah, right now, they're saying $154 a ton for recyclables, $109 a ton for garbage. It's costing us almost $50 a ton more to recycle.
Right.
Right. But, um, my concern is, we're not going to have a completed thing that we all agree on with Mount Tabor in that short term. And if we should reach out to Casella and tell them that we're trying to combine our efforts with Mount Tabor, and at that point, we'll basically be able to, you know, do what the two towns decide. And I don't think they should, I mean, there's nothing we can do, other than telling them that we want to move our facility, and it's a priority of ours.
Right. So if we sign the five-year contract and tell them right up front that we're...
No, I think, I think we should tell them upfront and not sign it right up front.
See what their response is, and...
Okay.
And get them, you know, if, I, they would be stupid not to work with us by the same contract pricing until we move, or if that falls through and we end up, then we can go from there.
Right.
But I just don't think...
And, Mount Tabor has a different company that they deal with, and we need to discuss that and see who's going to give us the best price.
Well, I think that's the thing, when we, if we do, which I would like to hope we could, we're going to have to basically vote on it as a combined town at that point, and decide what the best bet is. So for us to make decisions for half a thing right now, I don't think is, but I think we should reach out to them and explain to them what we're trying to do.
So I think one of you two gentlemen should handle that, since it falls under the...
I can do it, it's not a problem.
I'll take that with you.
Doesn't matter.
Guessing they'll want some forms of agreement.
Yeah.
Since it's expired.
Any other comments on the transfer station? I certainly feel that, you know, we should move forward as quickly as possible.
Can you discuss what you, other comments or discussions you have with Mount Tabor, like, they're interested.
No, and that's it. I mean, they, their bird changed again. The lady that was on it resigned, and so...
Did they make an appointment?
Bill.
Bassa?
Bill.
Bobby, regarding the character?
Yeah. But I, I think we should probably, I know everybody wants to get on that committee to go discuss it with them. But we should probably try to target, at least by the first of the year.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. And I mean, I don't mind continuing to be part of that, but I don't want to do it by myself either.
I think the biggest thing's going to be the logistics, and then we got to figure out is, are we bringing packers down, or are we going to go with the open system that they're using?
Right.
And I think that probably needs to be answered by us, if they're happy with their open system, is, are we going to be happy with the open system?
Well, based on what we just learned about the recycling, I mean, it just seems a damn shame that, you know, we're going to make a dollars and cents decision to probably not recycle, because it's so much less to just throw it in the trash, but bottom line is what it costs.
Yeah, I mean... Well, the other thing we should discuss on that, too, if we do move, Mount Tabor has a, they have a garbage dumpster, there's a dumpster that, I believe, it has like tin and washers, dryers, whatever, and then they have maybe a three-yard container for recyclables. They've got just a little container there that they probably dump every week, where we're dumping ours every other week for the recyclables, and I don't think it's more than half-full. So we could probably cut the cost on our recyclables, just by getting rid of the packer for that, and going to a smaller container. And in my opinion, as far as those packers go, if we're not going to stay here to hurt them.
Right. I agree. We're paying for dumpsters that aren't full.
We're paying for half-full dumpsters. We send a dumpster out every week of garbage, and it's half-full or less. So we're paying, the tonnage isn't going to kill us, but the tipping fee every week that we're paying, that we don't need to pay.
Unfortunately, unless you have x-ray vision, you can't see what's in there, and there's no kind of a, I mean, you would think in this day and age, there would be some technology that tells you how full or how empty it is, but...
And the problem, if we try and run, just continue using the packer until it can't pack no more, is if it happens on a Saturday, we're paying emergency tipping fees. Yeah, and I mean, we, right now, are paying $6,000 a year rent on those, where boxes, I think, are free. I think the, that's, did have... Oh, it does have $50 a month, yeah, for a 30-yard box.
So that's a substantial savings, too.
Yeah.
That seems like a no-brainer, go to open dumpsters, top covered up. Okay, some more on that next month, and if you want to set up a meeting with Mount Tabor beforehand, I'd be willing to participate in that. And we'll move on to the road commissioner's report.
I have two drivers that applied for the winter. I'm not aware of any others applying, so I want to... We got Robert Halligan and Matt Yership, both have experience driving, both have CDLs, both have plowing experience, and both drive trucks right now. So I'd like to tell them to go get their drug tests done, and we would put them, and it's going to be a, had to reason it's two, and I think, is, it's going to be every other week. Neither one of them want to...
Commit the entire...
Okay.
So...
One week on, one week off.
Week on, one week off. So if you're on, you're on for the full coverage of the plow season, so...
That makes sense. What do we define as the plow season?
Well, we'll bring them on, I would think, not next week, but the following week, and we'll probably let them go by first day of April. I mean, you guys cover from April, if we hired anybody by then, or you want to go April 15th, or... I'd say if we go to April 15th, that'd be good. Yeah, because there's other stuff we're doing. I mean, this is a third hand for, I mean, we're still talking, doing some ditching, we've still got plenty of brush cutting to do, so it's not that we're bringing them on exclusively for plowing, but it's going to help out.
Well, we still have mowing to do, too.
Yeah, don't hold your breath on mowing, because tractors got issues to where I'm more able to run it two hours a day. So right now, we've been concentrating on getting the leaves off the road so we can grade, and that's, trying to nurse it along so that I don't damage the tractor by just running it. It's, the hydro temperature is, for the tractor itself, is getting to a point, it's telling me to shut it down, but I don't know why. And at this point, I'm afraid it's going to have to go to United so that they can look at it, but we're trying to get our road set for winter before we make that decision. And I'm skipping over the one to the other, but on the salt bids, the pricing...
Yeah, we've had a couple others come in here. Yeah, we've had a couple others come in here.
But we made the decision...
Right.
A while ago, and I, and it's funny because I got a letter from Cargill, and I'm assuming it went to the town, I'm sure it was me and others, um, yeah, Danby, Clerk, and, and me, um, wondering, know why we haven't signed our letter that we, um...
And I did sign it after you and I talked about it to be sent back.
Now, Eastern is now Morton?
Hmm, I don't think so. We've got, we've got Eastern and we've got Morton.
Yeah, it's two different bids. Eastern's pretty cheap, Morton's pretty cheap.
So you signed?
I signed one for Cargill.
So...
We voted on it.
We had already voted on it.
Right. So did she not send it in?
As of yesterday, they have not got it because, just following up on the earlier email, um, I need to get the signed letter back so we can process deliveries. And that was Tim Barrett from Cargill, or represents Barrett for Cargill. So, I mean, we, we made, we had voted on the, um...
Yes, we did.
Thing, and we'd done it, so I guess just processing it is my concern.
And we've received salt from Barrett and Appalachia so far.
Okay. So this needs to be signed and sent in.
Well, you signed it and she didn't send it, is what we're thinking, apparently?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just make...
Or it got lost in the mail, as so many other things have recently.
Yeah. Okay, so just to follow up, they are still looking for the letter.
I'll put that right on top of the file and deal with that. And these other two, you just want to stick in the file or what?
Yeah.
Um, it's a good price.
Ninety something. And then you put on the...
Pretty good.
Yeah. The grants and aid...
Yeah.
Projects. Now, I'm going to go to them, where is? You did one project under 25 on that, Steve?
I believe it was for 24.
24. And they award that. We, they come to us, right? They just change names and people and...
They, they came and said, well, you've got $15,000 to work with. If we agree to the project you want to do, this is the amount of money your town has to work with.
What project was it that we did?
We did the culvert in front of Tracy Belden's, and that ditch line down through there was one that we did. Seems there was another one, but it's not coming to me. The other one I'm thinking of was that bridge, but that was different. That was a different grant. But the grants and aids was the, the ditch from Precious Crossroads down past Tracy Belden.
So I'm guessing, what was it that you had on there that you were asking about? You, Brad?
Well, the, well, these better, the Better Back Road Grant is due by the 27th of December.
And that's Stephanie you deal with?
Yes.
No, Stephanie's gone. We just got an email today that Stephanie's moving on and Ethan Peppin's taking that over.
Well, they're saying Jeremy Gilbrand.
Stephanie Bork will be stepping back from that role, and I will be taking over along with Jeremy, whatever his name is.
So I guess we got to, we got to give him a project by the 27th. Which we don't need to decide that. I mean...
Yeah, B, C, and D projects.
Well, there's high priority, there's...
Right. Shall I, oh, this, let's see?
Yeah, give it to Steve.
Well, a lot of this stuff, you know, that we have to do according to state guidelines during the approved time is not going to happen with two people. Because we haven't done any of the, any of the grants and aid project that Stephanie was pushing, because we haven't had time.
Well, we'll throw one out again and go from there. All right, let's move on.
Okay, is there any old business? I don't think so. So now, new business, um, again, we just got this letter today, November 14th, and this is from principal of Courier School that says, Dear Danby Select Board Members, our parent committee, funnily called Project Courier Excellence, is interested in helping to fund a structure to add to our current playground. Students for a couple of years have been asking for a climbing structure, and we are all hoping to fulfill this request. As many of you likely know, our playground is greatly appreciated by our school community and the community in general outside of school operating hours. Thanks for your generosity. Several years ago, we were able to replace our old playground, and then a few years ago, you helped to update our preschool playgrounds as well. We feel a climbing structure for Arcata, five playgrounds would also add much enjoyment for the community's children. Looking at options that would pass muster with our insurance company, we will likely need around $10,000 for the entire project. Our parent committee is prepared to support us with $3,000, and we are reaching out to you to ask if the remaining amount could be approved by the use of Silas Griffiths funds or any other funds you deem appropriate. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. We appreciate all you have done for us. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact me. Carolyn Perilla. And do you have the amount in the Silas Griffiths?
That is what I am looking as we speak. I think there was $21,001 in, 10 in the month. There's, there's the Griffith, KT Griffith Fund, and then there's the, her, okay.
Well, there's a, a special fund for the schools from Silas, and like, that's how we paved the driveway a number of years ago.
Well, we have $21,000 in the Catherine Griffith Fund, which I'm not sure which one, and then in the Silas Griffith Fund, we have $19,338. Um, so I, between each, or each fund, regardless of which one is the one, we have roughly $20,000 in the fund.
You're asking for around seven?
Seven.
Yeah. My only concern is the dubious state of what's happening with this thing, and I think, Ken, you were going to...
Yeah, I reached out to the Assistant Superintendent of Teconic and Green today, and they still do not have an answer. Um, they are going to have a better answer as of December 3rd, the next meeting coming.
I wonder if we should put that off until...
And I mean, you know, we're getting into winter season now, so I'm not sure that they...
Are going to sample it in the winter anyways.
Correct.
No, I think it, it, um, probably we could wait on the decision. I mean, I, I think that's a, and I think what we're discussing is you're saying about if the school's going to be there after a...
Correct.
Another year, if we're funding a playground for a non-operational school.
And I see there's also, something came to us from, there's outdoor recreation grants for municipalities opening too, and it says some of playgrounds, rec parks, and all that that the school might be, I mean, I, I didn't read it in too much detail, but there's 2025 outdoor recreation grants, 3.3 million. You know, the school can also, might get a look into that too, municipalities. There's a lot of criteria, any state money, but...
Right. Yeah, but like Brad said, I don't think there's anything we need to make a decision on.
I wasn't saying, ah, so I'm saying the school too, there's other opportunities.
I mean, there's those other opportunities out there, they should explore as well.
Right.
And I think we do have the money, but I think, yeah, we probably should find out what's going to...
Right.
Right.
We don't know if...
What was the name of that state fund?
Usable outdoor recreation projects. Yeah, I mean, there's always, I'm not saying it's not, might be put out, I'm just saying...
Yeah, the discussion I had with her, they still have no direction at this point. Nothing that they want to say, I guess. Well, I mean, I'm all in favor of, I was part of the committee that built the original playgrounds, but at this point, it's just a question of timing and...
Yeah, and, and the thing is though, us holding up on the boat on it isn't going to change...
No.
Their lives, I wouldn't think, because they're not going to put it together.
Right, until spring sometime.
Yeah. So, I mean...
Yeah, and I don't think it's a wise decision to spend money right now, there's a lot of uncertainty, and there's a lot, there's a lot to talk about.
Right.
Right. So we can revisit that?
Yeah, I would just hold it and say we'll revisit it in next meeting.
And then the only other question I have is when we would like, that's for you, um, when we would like to get together again and do more work on the budget.
So you're saying we should probably do it here?
Yeah, I'm thinking...
Thanksgiving Day?
Yeah, probably about...
Yeah.
Three o'clock in the afternoon.
I'm thinking we might want to do it before our December meeting, yeah, previous to our December meeting.
So like a week ahead of time or something?
Meeting at six, yeah. How does that sound to people?
To just see what we got.
What date you say?
I didn't throw out a date, I'm just curious, because it seems like we have a lot of work to do here and we didn't...
Our next meeting's the 12th.
Right.
Yeah. Um, do you guys want to do it in the same week? Like, do it on Tuesday or Monday or Tuesday?
If you do it on Monday, I won't be here.
Monday doesn't work for you?
The 9th, no, I've worked...
The week before is Thanksgiving, right?
No, the week before that's Thanksgiving.
Okay.
I just didn't know if we kind of...
I can do the 10th.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking if we stick with it one day and back two days later, it hasn't all completely, you know, still be in our minds fresh, we can keep moving.
Yep.
The 10th, you say the 10th, then still do a little bit earlier on the 12th? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the 10th is Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday the...
10th. Tuesday the 10th.
Oh, I see, okay.
Here, let me, let me get rid of all the other things. Yeah, no, I was, I was looking up there at the, at number one, I guess. Um, Tuesday the 10th at 6:00 or 6:30 or... Yeah, I just assume do it as early as anyone wants to.
It's fine.
Yep, it's dark at 4:00.
Yeah.
Uh, so Tuesday the 10th at 6:00.
Do you require my presence?
We do.
I'd like you a few minutes late, because we have an appointment that should end by like 5:15, and then it... But you know, maybe you're running that time, it's still a smooth ride.
Okay. And, um, you can always give us some information on these other things that we have question marks.
Yes.
So we can start some of the work without you. Okay, any other new business?
We're going to go, we're going to come early on the 12th too, to keep doing the budget or no?
See how we do on the 10th.
Well, yeah, there's a problem there because we have to advertise it in advance, and, um, that's not going to cover it.
We'll advertise that in advance, and if we're all done, you can show up.
Doesn't, doesn't...
And say it's all done.
Do some cleaning or something.
I'm just saying that if we, if we have a good day, um, because we can keep continuing on Tuesday, if we feel like pushing right through.
No, I just asked, I just wanted, if you don't want to do it Thursday, it's fine by me, I just didn't know what you were...
Yeah. Okay, it's, so just because of the notification process?
Warn it for both days.
Warn it for both days.
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
And if we get it done on Tuesday, the only one that'll be here Thursday at 6 is Brad.
Okay, um, since we don't have Mike here anymore, somebody's got to take on the responsibility of making that motion to adjourn.
Steve?
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Hi. Thanks.